The most valuable asset we have in this.
If you look at the bottom of the very last slide, it says, "Staff may consider a possible year two, and I will add year three, year four adjustments in order to facilitate further narrowing the gap with other agencies."
Yes, that would be great.
Because they're not waiting around.
Right.
We can't wait another 11 years to really address this. I mean, I know that you said you've been doing the studies, but we really haven't tweaked it.
But there was a four-year period in there, five-year period, where it made no sense to make any adjustments because we didn't have the money to do it.
Right. Okay, so were you going to make the motion?
I was going to make a motion that we accept the pay plan and use alternative C as our basis.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, a second, to approve the pay plan and alternative C. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Yep.
One quick item before we take a break, I guess.
Yep.
Again, this is not perfect. It will hopefully be accepted by most of the employees. It may not. So if you get any inquiries, just send them all back down to Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. And it was more than five minutes.
It was, but it was good. Good work, Phil. Okay, 10:57. We'll come back at 11:05. Wise. See people. I know. See people this morning thought, oh, they're kids.
We got another.
I know. I didn't bring snacks today either. Where is she? Oh, okay.
My headache's coming back. It's not good. I just took some Advil. Let's see if that helps.
Okay, it is 11:06 and we are back in session. The next item we have is...
You have to adjourn.
Oh, we have to adjourn as the ci... Oh, this is where it gets fun. We have to adjourn as the city council and we are reconvening as the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
So...
Would you like me to...
Yes, usually you would read that. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I'm not sure if it's necessary, but all members of the governing body of that district are present. Is that necessary? No. Okay. So this is a resolution which I will read by title only. A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2018, 2019, setting a date, time, and place for public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment and providing an effective date.
So previously, we had come to you with the BSI Canal Maintenance Assessment pro forma's and this particular fund would maintain the single-family residential assessment rate of $555, which is the operating assessment of 460, and then the judging project assessment of $95 for fiscal year 2019. And again, just to remind everyone, the... These current rates and this current assessment assumes the federal and state assistance for Hurricane Irma repairs. Any questions?
Questions?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the BSI Canal Maintenance Fund assessment of $555.
Excuse me. David, do we consider these a public hearing? We did that. We did it that way last year.
We did.
I don't know that we did them here as a public hearing, but we did at the budget.
September.
I don't recall, and so in abundance of caution, let's go ahead.
And we also announced when the public hearing would be held, in September?
Okay, so we had a motion, a second, but we're gonna...
Oh, withdraw.
Okay.
I can give you the date of the... Let me provide you with the date and the time, okay?
It's in the resolution.
Yes, and I have that here.
September 5, 2018, at 5:01. Yes.
There you go.
Okay. This is a public hearing on the BSI Canal Maintenance Fund assessment of $555. If anybody would like to speak, come to the podium to my right. You have three minutes. BSI Canal Maintenance Assessment for 2019 of $555. Last call for anybody to speak on this assessment for BSI Canal.
Move close public hearing?
Second.
We've motioned a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. So we need...
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the $555 assessment for BSI Canal Maintenance. Correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, we will recess and we will reconvene now as the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
And we have a resolution which I'll read by title only. A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2018, 2019, setting a date, time, and place for public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment and providing an effective date.
Okay, so for the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Fund, there is a proposal to increase the single-family residential assessment rate to $650. That's the operating assessment of $550 and an additional assessment of $100 for repayment of debt service on the Hurricane Irma repairs. And currently in our pro forma, that assessment is scheduled from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 2022, even though we're only considering 19 at the moment. And again, it assumes the federal and state assistance for Hurricane Irma repairs.
Questions for Kristin?
And again, the next public hearing would be September 5 at 5:01 here at council chambers.
This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on the PGI Canal Maintenance Assessment for fiscal year 2019 of $650, now would be the time. Would anybody like to speak on the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District assessment for 2019? Last call for anybody on the PGI Canal Maintenance Assessment for 2019 of $650.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval of the agenda item for Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District of $650 for fiscal year 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And next, now we recess and we reconvene as the City of Punta Gorda Lot Mowing Assessment District.
Yes, and this is a resolution which I'll read by title only. A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the City of Punta Gorda Lot Mowing Assessment District for fiscal year 2018, 2019, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment and providing an effective date.
Kristin from Finance again. Change the assessment from $165 currently to $170. And again, our lot mowing contract allows for a 3% increase and that will cover the increase.
Questions on lot mowing assessment?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to say it's a hell of a deal. It's three years in a row I've said it.
I sure wish they'd do my lawn for that much.
Exactly.
This is a public hearing on the lot mowing assessment for 2019, which is $170. Would anybody like to speak on that? This is a public hearing for the lot mowing program. Anybody like to speak on the assessment for 2019? Last call.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the lot mowing assessment for fiscal year 2019 of $170. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
And again, the final hearing will be September 5 at 5:01 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. So now...
Now, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm recessing.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're going to recess as the City of Punta Gorda Lot Mowing Assessment District and we're going to reconvene now as the city council.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, while I'm glad we, in abundance of caution, held public hearings on these, I believe that public meetings were only required and we did open it up for public comment at the beginning of the session, which would have included these items. Hopefully we'll remember next year to determine for sure whether it needs to be a public hearing or not.
Yeah, and then somehow we should probably note that on the agenda items.
Yeah, but it's all right. We did. We did fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Now we move as the city council into unfinished business.
And our goal as Urban Design presents to you our thoughts. These are just our thoughts. Our goal today, if possible, is that we agree on a scope, a process, so we can put it out on the street. Because by the time we do all of that, go through the whole process and select a firm, we're talking about not having a firm selected at the earliest November.
Oh, we're still morning. Good morning, Mitchell Austin for the record at Urban Design. So briefly, I wanted to go through this presentation to discuss what staff feels is appropriate in terms of the citywide master plan, and this is based on the request for qualifications document that you have in your agenda packages. So generally, what is a master plan? We're looking at a future vision and policy guide for the city. This is a long-range policy document, typically more than five years, up to 20 years. This is a public policy document that should be comprehensive in scope and really looks at all aspects of the community's development. Why a master plan? Don't we already have a plan? We do have a plan. As required by Florida law, we do have a comprehensive plan. We also have many other plans that support that document, Parks and Rec Master Plan, Alternative Transportation Plan. We also have very comprehensive land development regulations. But if you look back at the sort of vision documents that guide those policies, those vision documents are getting quite old. They're from 2005. So it's time for an update. The master plan process doesn't happen overnight. The timing of that planning process is really dependent upon the physical and social capacity of the community. How much money are we willing to spend to get it done? How much agreement or disagreement is there in the community that we need to, you know, to figure out and to come together over a single vision for our community? So staff proposes a three-part solution for getting there. As we see here, the first part of that is really an analysis piece that happens. This is really a budgetary and economic analysis to figure out where we're at as a community and what the baseline is for understanding. The next phase, which is the actual master plan, we're proposing a shred process, which is the actual community engagement piece to help create, craft that vision. And the third piece is after we've created a vision, we'll have a policy document. But the actual force of law is contained in other documents, the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations specifically. So we need a plan for getting that vision into those actual policy documents where the rubber meets the road. So in terms of an economic and budgetary analysis, what are we really talking about? And there are three major components that we need to look at, given the characteristics of our community. The primary of those is demographic changes. We've been the beneficiaries here in Florida of... We're a retirement state and here in southwest Florida particularly, we're a retirement-rich area. And the baby boomers have been retiring during this period that I've been in Florida since the early 2000s and they're a big generation. There are just a lot of them. There aren't as many Gen Xers, so we're about to hit a window where there won't be as many people retiring. Those people that do retire, we have to figure out how to attract them here. In terms of the economic conditions, there are a lot of things affecting the city. Everything from climate change to the Uber thing of e-commerce. I mean, we all talk about, well, it would be nice to have this store, that store in Punta Gorda. Retailers are closing stores throughout the country, so attracting them to markets to open new locations is a tremendous challenge. And budgetary conditions. We talked a lot about the budget today, so I don't need to rehash those, but we do have an aging infrastructure and we need to be prepared to fix that infrastructure as well as continue to improve parts of it. And we need to deal with potential shrinking tax base. The Florida legislature seems to be compelled to figure out new and exciting ways for to shrink the local government's ability to provide the tax revenue that we need to provide those goods and services at the local level. So the next piece of the puzzle, after we've done all of that analysis and we have this baseline data of this is where we're at as a community, that data is really informing the process of a design shred. So what is a shred? It's a brief and intense design workshop. What is a shred? Shred is a French word for cart. At the École des Beaux Arts in Paris in the 1900s, and that's the School of Fine Arts, the professors would send around an assistant with a cart, a literal cart, to the student studios. And when the cart passed your studio space, you had to put your final project on the cart. So the students took on that word of the cart and they expanded it to mean that final sort of couple weeks before the cart actually came around as that intense period of design where you really get everything done because you're under pressure to get it done. So it's an artificial construct to create a shred process where you're trying to compress all the energy into a really quick format of iterative design. So the primary piece of a shred is that is us. It's stakeholders. It's interested citizens. It's the people of the community that will be directly impacted. And input is provided through this process at the very earliest stages of planning and design. So it's really designed to create the maximum value of that public input. It's not dead public input of somebody saying something in a meeting. It's a living public input that actually drives the process. There are various ways to get that input. Usually you see a lot of interactive exercises. You see interviews with stakeholders and topic experts. You have public meetings, focus groups. They're great tools on the internet for actually facilitating this process now that didn't exist back in 2005, the last time our community undertook this process. I'd like to point out this little diagram down here at the bottom. It says, "Concepts, public review, alternatives, public review, refinement, public review." You end up with a plan. The public is critical to making a design shred work. It's critical to making this master plan process work. It is part and parcel, the way that staff sees this occurring, is through the public's input. So in terms of the next stage, implementing that vision, we need to take the actual finished product, the policy plan, the master plan, and figure out how that complies or does not to our current comprehensive plan, land development regulations, and other policies that we may have. Once we've done that technical review and created a set of draft changes, or sets of draft changes, those will be subject to the public hearing process and then adoption by council. So again, you get another stage of another iteration of public input before you change the actual policies that will affect the built environment. Why should we hire a consultant? We have planning staff. We have professional planning staff that's well-versed in how to do all of these things. We understand these things. But as was brought up earlier in the pay and classification study, we're a very lean organization. There's not a lot of fat here. We don't have a lot of free time to sit around and do these, this type of intensive planning exercise. Our jobs are primarily consumed with making sure the trains run on time. So we need to hire a consultant that has that capacity and efficiency and the specialized skills required to make this process maximally effective for the citizenry and for the city. Any questions?
So what's in front of you is a process called a request for qualifications. Doesn't have to be. You could do requests for proposals. We've come up with requests for qualifications. Why? By putting out the request for qualifications, the prospective planning firms will be evaluated based on their qualifications and whether they address the scope, and we have outlined a scope for you as well. And once that evaluation is done, you will come up with three to five firms you might want to interview. You decide how many. We're not talking dollars yet. And then you go through the interview process and you rank them. And then you sit down and you negotiate a contract. That's one way of doing it.
Let's talk about the document first, the RFQ, and then we can talk about the process and how we're going to go about. One glaring omission that I see is review and evaluation of the 2005 master plan. Because in conversations with citizens and from what we've heard is that some of it worked and some of it didn't. And we need to really hone it, have the new firm or the firm, whoever it is, evaluate all that and see, you know, what worked, what didn't, what are the pain points? What are the things that were adopted that maybe should go away? And what are the things that weren't adopted that should maybe make a comeback? I mean, there's a lot of stuff in there. And maybe some of the stuff that's in there that's vague, maybe it could be refined to be brought back again, those things. So number one, I would definitely like, and I don't know if it should go under plan objectives, review 2005 city master plan and evaluate it professionally and give us a feedback on what worked and what didn't. The other thing that I didn't see in here that I would like to pull in somehow is Florida building codes. Florida building codes have changed since 2005. So how do Florida building codes affect buildings that the City of Punta Gorda has? We heard about the hotel earlier. And from what I've been told, you could not build a Wyburn today. You have to build a hotel at base flood elevation. So the Florida building codes have changed and thus the buildings that you see in downtown and all over Florida have changed as well. So we need to somehow parse that in there too, so people understand it's not just the city dictating these things, that yes, the building codes have changed and that's why things have changed over time. So those two things, I would definitely like to see added as central components. Uh-huh.
I guess two other components would be, one, so that we don't operate in a bubble. I think we need to include how Punta Gorda is going to benefit from developments in the county. I think that that piece, if we do Punta Gorda just as Punta Gorda, then we're literally not doing anything because we do live in a greater economic ecosystem. Secondly, we need a firm that actually can do analysis of our CAFER. Our CAFER is our report card on actually whether or not we actually are effective at what we're doing. And I think it's very important that anyone who does the economic side, they need to relate to past, present, and future, how our CAFER is going to get to this objective of having like, you know, the basic, in terms of the government finance managers, basic is 17.5% reserves as basic. And we live in a hurricane zone, so I think in terms of how we design this, we need to design this so that our CAFER can get us to the 17.5 minimum, really 25, 30%, to be honest. I mean, Northport, they have as a base 20 and they have up to 35% reserve. And I think just our, and I think that's a good peer pressure model for us, that we need to shoot a little higher than that. And I think that with this plan, the CAFER is our report card on whether or not we're actually doing this or whether we're just living in an imaginary bubble.
Along that line too, financially, I mean, we've had the 20, 75, 25. We're 90, 10 now. Is that really, you know, we've had that in the strategic plan, the 75 residential, 25% commercial. Is that really, really the number? Is that really, and how will that affect the city overall? If we did get to the 25 or more, how does that really impact? Because some people say, well, you know, we're doing fine at 90, 10. Why do we need to change? So we need to consider that as well.
In regard to that, part of how that number came out to the public knows, I met with our past finance manager, Dave Drury, and I asked him the honest question. This is before I got on council. What do we need to have so that our taxes are equal to the cost of services? And his number was 25% commercial. So that's where, just to let people know, that's where the number comes from. But again, this is why the CAFER is so important in terms of that being a component, that we can't do this simply as an aesthetic exercise. It has to be connected to our economics as well.
What's glaringly absent from what I'm looking at, I don't see that we're asking for the actual proposal at the same time as we're asking for qualifications. I think it should be one and the same. I think they should present their qualifications and address the scope of the project and how they can best be the company to manage the project. I would also like to specifically ask them who they will be using on their staff to do the project when it comes time to do it, because some companies may opt to hire college students to come in and do the project. Where we would want professionals at that company to be the assigned people to do what we need to have done. If we're hiring a firm and we're going to pay all this money, we want to make sure we have the best qualified people working on it that we can possibly have. So I would like to see this incorporated, the scope incorporated into the actual qualifications and have everything filed at one time. And it will save us a whole step in between. Because I don't think we should, right now, it appears to me that it's a two-tiered process and I don't think that that's the way we want to go about it. We might be able to save some time and a lot of effort if we get all of the information at one time.
I agree with that we need to have a, the economic impact of what these recommendations might be. But I don't think tying it to the CAFER is where we need to go. That's getting down into a granular piece. I think some of these, well, but some of these things, like the amount of reserves is a policy decision. And something, but what we do want this to do is drive economic impact so that we have the money to make those decisions. So I think in here, we're really looking for the economic impact of the recommendations so that we can see how those are going to drive the right things we want going forward. Does that make sense?
I mean, it makes kind of sense, but the problem is, is that we can be aspirational, but the evidence of our effectiveness, even up until now, we look at our CAFER. We can tell how well we're actually doing and how we're not. I mean, we can view ourselves in a certain positive way, but our CAFER tells us how we're actually doing. And that's what I'm saying. It's important that we not forget that our finance department is really, that's who keeps us honest. We, them having to juggle bubbles is, you know...
Right, but I think what I'm saying here is that it's one thing to say, yes, we think you should be doing, having this kind of a thing in this particular part of town, but how does that tie to the economic performance?
All right, explain it more clearly. Basically, this is going to tell us how much commercial activity we're going to actually need to have in town in terms of, in terms of looking at commercial taxes that we're going to have to look at. Are we supposed to continue to rely like we are right now on residential taxes? Or should we actually change our code so that there can be more commercial activity so that we can achieve what we need to to be a viable city and not be so vulnerable financially like we are now?
Gary?
A couple things, a couple comments that I'd like to make. One is, is a master plan that I think where we have failed in the past, and you kind of alluded to it, was is really any kind of plan such as this should be a living plan. It shouldn't be looked at every 10 years. It really should be looked on as a continuous living plan. And I think we just need to emphasize that more probably to ourselves, but also look to somebody in the process of doing this on how we could achieve, force ourselves to achieve that, to develop that habit. Secondly, in this general discussions that we have, and I would like, and I, that I take issue with, that I would like somebody that were to help us develop a citywide master plan, is we always just talk about downtown. We don't talk about our service area. We don't talk about the, I mean, we've made a resolution that if you touch us, you're going to incorporate into us, et cetera. But we do supply these people with city water and city sewer and those... But we do supply these people with city water and city sewer and those services. And those are areas that have the potential for light industrial, affordable housing issues that, you know, that we confuse. You know, no one's really saying that they want to put affordable housing in PGI or BSI. But we do want that in, so that we can have people that can afford to live here and work here. And then also the type of economic base. We talk about the commercial and we do have this blighted piece of real estate that could have great potential in downtown and then also along 41 to the Save More. And then out towards the hospital. And we don't want to ever de-emphasize that. But we also have all this other potential real estate that we would want to incorporate into our city, whether it's five years from now or 50 years from now. But it's our service area that can also contribute to the overall economic viability and sustainability of our community. And at the same time, help us maintain our lovely lifestyle in the aisles and in the historic district and the other historic districts, et cetera. So I think that we need to take the title, Citywide Master Plan, more seriously and more encompassing than we tend to do in our speech on a day-to-day basis. That's the only comment I wanted to make.
I think too, your point well taken about, I think where the 2005 plan fell short was it was not reviewed. And it, you know, team handed to the city, at that point, it probably should have been spelled out who's going to do what in the future. So I think this plan should definitely, like you said, have a recommendation from this firm on how to keep it a living document, like you said.
And I reflect on what was going on back then. I don't disagree with what you're saying. When it was gifted, it really was not accepted with open arms.
Right.
And so I think at this point in time, and when we went to Delray Beach and saw what they did, the same consultant, Jaime Correa, led their community, and I've said this before, on the development of their master plan, that was funded by the city. And so it was a whole different process. This one was funded by the community. And because we were experiencing angst about certain things, and that was the issue. So I think, I think we're in a different time and space and we're going to be able to rectify that.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and I think that the, knowing the citizens' master plan, the 2005 master plan, it does talk to the greater community. It does talk to, you know.
Annexations, yes.
All kinds of things, so.
Yeah, and I understand that, that's the same.
We want to continue that thing.
We want to continue, we don't want to lose sight of it. If all we do is, is we fund this thing and then we get it and we say, oh, wow, this is great and we're going to do this. And we even do a checklist and we start checking things off. And three years later, we haven't relooked at it. We just, because it is very obvious that things are dynamic, okay? If we were having this conversation two years ago, Sunseeker wouldn't have been part of the equation, okay? The gentleman that spoke earlier about the fact that, you know, that's going to have an impact on what Punta Gorda is, that's fine. Maybe that should be town center and we should be boutique center or whatever. But we should allow it to, it will affect how we define ourselves, but we shouldn't let it dictate how we define ourselves. And that's really what we need. And then we need to live it and change it, just as we change in our own lives, just to maintain viability.
And to your point, the 2005 master plan talked a lot about Main Street, Punta Gorda. We did that. It didn't work. Because Main Street is really regentification, not open vacant land centric. So things like that, I see what you're saying. Like over time, over the last 14, 15 years, we tried that, that part didn't work. We need an analysis of that. That went to my first point. But that's, I think, you know, getting their recommendations for how to keep this thing reviewed and living is very important. Uh-huh.
Actually, something Gary just said right now. I met with John Redmond last weekend and part of it, he offered to participate with us in this process. And I think it's very important that when we talk about stakeholders, those parties who are in the county who are doing projects, we need to be with them the entire time we're doing this. Again, we're not operating in a vacuum. Secondly, I do think it's important that we also have a firm that has experience in either southwest Florida or central Florida, so they know our environment, so it's not just academic. They have to really know who we are. I think that's a very important.
That would be important for me too.
Well, what I'm hearing then is.
We didn't hear, I saw a whisper, but did we hear that we could do what Lynn suggested?
Well, we can go back to the traditional request for proposal route.
Marion Pace Procurement Manager, I would love to do that. But however, if we're going to be requiring any services from the engineer as part of the team or architect, landscape architect, or surveying, we must comply with 287.055, which is the Consultants' Competitive Negotiations Act. Because we are, it's requiring those special folks to participate in the project. And because of that, we cannot ask for prices upfront. We can only evaluate them.
I wasn't asking for prices. I'm suggesting that when we send this RFQ out, that it includes, that the respondents must address the scope of the work and how they plan to do it.
That's a part of our component in our solicitation document, same thing as the team qualifications. It's a whole checklist that some of that stuff was not on your, I think, is it, your summary? Because it's a standard component in our RFQ document.
But that's not made clear, that's not made clear.
I did not review that, I'm sorry.
But my statement is that I think that it needs to be a comprehensive RFQ, if that's what you're calling it. But it also must state that when they respond, they must respond with the specific things that are the scope of work that they plan to do for the city. I just think that that's really important. I think that it'll save us a second step. I also think it's extremely important that city council be the people that interview all these firms. We talked about this a number of times. I don't think that this should be left up to the procurement department to handle. This is something that's really important to me specifically. I can't speak to my colleagues, but I think that council needs to be the five-person group that interviews every one of these companies and limits it down to the shortlist before the negotiations are commenced.
Well, yeah, I mean, what, you can either have council take all the proposals. Okay.
I was just going to ask Marion to describe the difference between a request for proposals and a.
Request for qualification.
And a request for qualifications.
It's basically just terminology. Request for qualifications is basically when we're asking for their qualifications, we're asking for them for their proposed scope of work, them to submit their qualifications on the team that is proposed, their timeline, their deliverables, but we don't ask for any prices. So that, the RFQ process is basically for the engineers and architects. In our terminology, a request for proposals, the whole thing, to where you ask the scope, you get the price, you get this, you get that. The only thing that's different that you don't get between the request for proposal and request for qualifications in their submitter packages is anything related to price. So it's basically what you're requesting, it's just the terminology that we're not getting price in the RFQ. But we will get everything else.
I would like to see that spelled out so that every company that's responding understands that they must also provide their scope of work and what they plan to do.
It's in a detailed checklist that we provide to them of everything they are to submit.
Okay.
Isn't it true, Marion, too, that the RFQ does give them some flexibility? So if they did see something that they said, well, maybe you don't need that, you might need this. It would give them an opportunity instead of us saying, we want this, we want that. This gives them the flexibility to pick and choose and maybe massage it to their firm's experience.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, build that into it. That's what I.
That's where I was going. I just, I just wanted to make sure that our expertise isn't this, other than two individuals that I can think of specifically. And that I would want anybody that would come to us to also be able to suggest, well, you know, you really might want to look at it this kind of way for, you know, and give us their idea that our scope, we think we know, but maybe they may know how to tweak it a little bit better for our purposes, particularly as they get to know us, so.
They might also have specific people on their staff that would be focused on certain things that are really important, so, yeah.
I'm totally on board with council. I mean, we did it for the lobbyists and I think, you know, this person's working for us. And I think that's the most important. So are we all in agreement that the council should?
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. Is, do we want any community participation in this process?
I mean, they're going to be at the meetings, but ultimately, we have to make the decision.
Yeah.
And that's our decision.
I agree.
That's what it comes down to.
I agree.
Okay.
So the way we're going to frame it is that if we get two applications, 12 applications, whatever, whatever proposals we get in, council's going to review all of them and decide who the shortlist is going to be to interview.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. That's.
Got the work cut out for us. That's why we're paid the big bucks.
I'm all in on this. I think this is something really crucial to the future of the city, so, yeah.
Terribly important.
Well, now that we know what the price tag is, I think we're all in, all in.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that reflecting on how this has gone in the past, I don't think this needs to take forever.
No.
You know, this can be, we can get this done through the next season.
A timeline would be, she mentioned timelines, so timeline would be very important.
Yes.
Do you, well, we know a request for qualifications. Council's going to do all of the review upfront, shortlist them. Do you want to see the final document before it goes out on the street?
Yes, because we just added some stuff.
Yeah, it did. So we may not have that ready for the 11th.
Yeah.
We may have to have it ready for August 22nd.
You could, when it's completed, if you could send it to us individually, we could take our time to, you know.
Yes, can I ask one question, just to make sure when I'm preparing the solicitation? We do, lots of times, we'll do special projects or special topics as a master agreement, which you've seen in the past, to where we'll establish a term contract for a master agreement with the selected firm. And like the first phase would be a specific authorization. That way, if six years down the road, if you need to do something else, you need to update a component or what have you, it gives you, allows you to be able to go back to that same company should you choose to do a master agreement for that work.
Yes.
I know we don't have a timeline for us to look at here today. But if we were to look at the end game and say, this needs to be done by the April 1, I'm throwing that out there, of 2019, because that's when season's over effectively, then backing up, when does whatever have to happen? And when does council have to have this, you know, so that we can send it out? And I think that that's going to dictate.
Good point.
When this needs to be done. Because I'm fearful of us taking our good old time and we're going to go on break and then all of a sudden, we're going to find ourselves behind the eight ball and we're going to shortchange. We're taking more time and we're going to shortchange the time that the consultant needs to do what they need to do. And so I would rather us operate a little more expeditiously if it.
Let's push for the 11th.
What?
Let's push to have this ready.
We cannot have it done by the 11th.
Now, what I would.
But you just.
Well, I know we're going on.
Thursday and Friday.
Especially a holiday week, that's.
Do you need to call a special meeting of council during, while we're on vacation?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, you can always call a special meeting.
That's good, yes, yes.
With that being the only agenda item, we've done that before.
That's good, I like that.
You just need to have three of us to be able to show up, right?
Well, city council, will all of you be here the week of September 16th?
September.
So.
I mean, July 16th.
Going in the wrong direction.
July 16th.
Yes.
I'm going the 19th. The 18th works.
The 18th is a Wednesday.
That works. I mean, I don't have anything until 11.
It gives us an extra week.
Yeah, we can do nine to 11.
Oh, I better check this calendar. July 18th work? Yes, no, maybe so?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm checking.
July 18th works.
Yep, I'm good.
Nine o'clock?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Special council meeting?
Yes.
Very cool.
Okay, that gives us an extra week. That's all we need.
Marion, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
Marion and I have a slightly different understanding of the Competitive Consultants Act. I take a very liberal approach and Marion takes a very conservative approach. The Act doesn't apply to all professionals.
No, it does not.
Certain specifically identified professionals in the Act that require compliance with the Act if you're hiring those kinds of professionals. I don't necessarily agree that the professionals that we would be hiring for this process are covered by the Act. It may include some of those professionals, like an engineer or a surveyor. But not all of the professionals that might be qualifying or seeking this proposal would be covered. So I kind of look at it, what we're asking for as kind of a hybrid. And in an abundance of caution, I have no real heartburn if we follow the provisions of the statute. However, as I understand, and that's why I asked earlier, the difference between a request for qualifications and a request for proposals, is that with a request for proposal where price is a concern, you identify the scope of work and then you have the people kind of say, what will that cost us? With the request for qualifications, the major concern is, do those people have the kinds of expertise that we're looking for? And you only briefly describe what the scope of the work is going to be. And in their proposal, the request for qualifications, they don't really get into much detail as to how they're going to accomplish what we're looking for. And as I hear the city council direction, they want to know not only what the qualifications of these folks might be, but they want to hear what their methodology might be.
Exactly, yes, that is included.
And that's a very important part. And I'm not so sure from a legal perspective that if we liked somebody's methodology more than someone who might appear to be more qualified on paper, that that necessarily accomplishes the objectives of the Act. So I'm just asking, Marion, are you comfortable that if we make the methodology as important a consideration, if not even an equal consideration, to the qualifications, that we won't run afoul of the statute when we make a selection based to a large extent on the methodology that's proposed?
Normally, in the RFQ process, they are to provide their methodology or their project approach for providing us, or meeting the scope of service. They're to expand on how they're going to do A, B, and C, all the objectives. We also develop an evaluation criteria weight that for like four or five different criteria, and then they, usually a city staff or whoever puts the weight to it. So if the methodology is, quite frequently, methodology is sometimes more than their qualifications. I've never been feigned on my process for the RFQs when putting in the weights and criterias of how the evaluation committee is going to evaluate. The only thing it doesn't have.
Because if we couldn't hire somebody based on what we believe to be the better methodology and the statute required us to put more weight on qualifications, I might then advise you that we don't, we shouldn't be following the statutory requirements and do it so it suits our purposes. But if Marion is saying that we can accomplish what we need to accomplish through the statutory route, I'm okay with that. I just needed to bring that out as a further discussion.
I think we do because we can't under, again, we can't underemphasize the importance of the disciplines we're talking about, the planning, architecture, engineering. I think we do, that's kind of the baseline of who, because they've got to be capable of carrying out the methodology that they're saying they can do. So I think her approach is safer for us.
Anything else?
No, we're reconvening at seven, July 18th.
At 9:00 AM.
At 9:00 AM.
Good idea, Nancy, very good idea.
Okay, thank you. Hey, I got one.
It's like the light bulb.
You just delayed your recess, that's all.
It's worth it.
It's a short one.
It's worth it.
It's, this is too critical.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's too critical for us. If we waited until we got, came back in August, I'm, I'm just concerned.
I think it's lunchtime or something, I'm not sure. I know. We don't have any new business, but, on this agenda, but we have recommendation from city officers. Do you have any more to say that?
Well, since the last time I spoke today, I still remain cautiously optimistic.
Okay, sounds good. City clerk?
What am I, chopped liver?
Oh, city manager.
Yes.
You've said enough today, but go ahead.
We'll have the acting city manager assignments out today for, up and through the July 14th.
Safe travels.
Will do.
Come back in one piece, please.
And have fun.
City clerk?
Yes, under boards and committees, starting with vacancies, we have a three-year term on the code enforcement board. Under nominations, we have a four-year term on the police officers pension board. We do have one eligible applicant. If you would like to nominate and appoint.
Nominate and point? What?
This, excuse me, there, there is two people noted on the nomination. Mr. Ford and Mr. Ashworth.
No, Mr. Ford.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, I misread it.
Nominate and appoint.
Sorry.
We need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to nominate and appoint Mr. Ashworth. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Very good, thank you. Moving to appointments, we have a, we actually have two three-year terms on the code enforcement board and four eligible applicants. Get your voting forms. You're voting for two, please.
And the appointees are Mr. Shalfo and Mr. Lanza.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next, under appointments, we have a three-year term on the Historic Reservation Advisor Board. We do have four eligible applicants for that one seat.
And the appointee is Mr. Williams.
Last is, we have a three-year term on the planning commission. We have two eligible applicants for this seat.
And the appointee is Mr. Peterson.
Okay, policy and legislation. I just have one update about the Florida League Conference, Homeru Rally. We have a Homeru Rally Friday at 1:00, I believe. So you'll be hearing more from me about that. We're representing, obviously, the southwest Florida region. But they're really trying to make it a big, a big deal. So I think I mentioned it before and we'll be, we'll be decked out in some gear. So more to come on that.
Oh, no. I'd be scared.
No. Not yet, anyway. Yeah, we got to represent, so I'll, I'll let you know.
I'm all in.
Okay, good, awesome.
I think I might have a root canal there.
That's all I have. No other announcements, no. Council member comments, we'll start with Jahah.
Okay. Everyone have a good, good fourth.
Happy fourth to everybody.
Ditto, happy fourth.
A happy fourth. I just would like to say a thank you to the PGI Marine Watch. They, I see Mr. Skilcorn's here, but I think his bill's gone. Have volunteered.
He's back there.
Oh, there he is. I couldn't, sorry. They, they have stepped up to the plate to provide boats for the swim. And they've also, through the years, have provided a great adjunct security issue. And I just want to acknowledge their participation and, and community service. So with that said, I wish everybody a happy fourth and a good swim.
Yes, thank you for your service. Hey, you know, glad you mentioned that. Our, our police chief's in for a really fun day tomorrow. She probably has no idea what, what goes on here. So Pam, just giving you a heads up. Citizens comments, any, any topic? Anybody, citizens? Citizens comments, any topic? Please take the podium. Three minutes, anybody? No? The seats are too comfy, nobody's getting up? Okay, happy fourth, everybody, we are adjourned.